One eighty, there we are.
So I'll call to order the Rosemount City Council regular meeting. Today is Tuesday, April twenty first, two thousand and twenty. If you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag is showing.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
I thought it wasn't, okay.
Cables, cables, legions to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First of all, are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Not at this time.
So with no corrections, anyone wish to move a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Oh, second, sorry.
We have a motion and second on the floor. Aaron, please take the roll. You're muted.
Weizensohn?
Aye.
Black?
Aye.
Drasty?
Aye.
Essler?
Aye.
Freski?
Aye.
Motion carries. The agenda is approved. We'll now move on to presentations. We have two this evening. The first one before us is Arbor Day proclamation. I'll turn this over to our Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. Schultz.
All right, can you hear me, Mayor?
I can.
All right, so this one, I think I missed what you said earlier, but I'm assuming this is the Arbor Day?
Correct.
Okay, so every year we identify a day in May as Arbor Day, and we do a tree giveaway and a small ceremony. We also do a tree planting. Due to the coronavirus, we are recommending that we go ahead and we do the proclamation tonight, and we proclaim Arbor Day as May second, but we are planning to move the tree giveaway back to June sixth, just to give us a little more time to hopefully, you know, get out of the, you know, placing in home, and, you know, we'll still be able to, you know, to offer that tree giveaway, you know, with social, you know, separation and things like that, so that won't be an issue. But we just felt giving ourselves an extra month for the tree giveaway would be, would be good, so we still plan to give away the trees. We'll be marketing that to residents when we get a little closer to the date. But with that, we're looking to get the proclamation approved.
So with that, I'll read the proclamation. The proclamation states, whereas trees and forests brighten Minnesota's future by creating jobs, providing recreational settings, increasing property values, and making cities more livable. And whereas trees and forests brighten society by building a strong community ties, reducing crime, and providing common meeting places. And whereas trees and forests brighten our lives by providing lumber for building homes, fiber for producing paper, and foliage for decorating and food for eating. And whereas trees and forests brighten the environment by moderating climate, improving air and water quality, conserving water and energy, and sheltering wildlife. And whereas each year on the last Friday of April throughout the month of May, Minnesotans pay special tribute to the trees and all natural resources they represent, and dedicate themselves to the common health of the state's community and rural forest. Now therefore, I, William Drasty, Mayor of Rosemount, do hereby proclaim May second, two thousand and twenty, as Arbor Day in the city of Rosemount, dated this date, twenty first of April, two thousand and twenty. So with that, like Dan indicated, we'll communicate with our residents as we go through the month, depending on how rules change. So that completes, yes?
Just question, just a question for Dan. Does he happen to know what trees they might be offering this year?
We have not selected those trees yet because we're pushing it back. Part of it's going to be what's, what's available come June, because about as late as you can get a bare root tree, so we have not picked those trees yet.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
That concludes item three A. We'll now move to three B, which is recognition of the city of Rosemount volunteers, and with that, I'll turn this over to our city administrator, Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As you see before you in your packet, the week of April eight, nineteenth through the twenty fifth is Volunteer Appreciation Week nationwide, and so we take this time every April to acknowledge our volunteers. Of course, this is a different time for us. We typically would plan to do an event with them where we bring them in for food and recognition and a chance to mingle. We would still intend to do that in the future when, when the world gets a bit more back to normal, but we did not want to miss the chance to at least acknowledge and appreciate the large amount of volunteers we have in this community. And so I just was pulling up the annual report that we get from our volunteer coordinator that we share with a few of our neighboring cities, and I wanted to read out some statistics from her annual report. So in two thousand and nineteen, we had eight hundred and thirty-two individuals that volunteered, and this is again just the folks that volunteer kind of under the auspices of the city of Rosemount and work with our volunteer coordinator. We of course know that there's other coaches and mentors and then everything else that happens volunteerism wise, but confirmed volunteers, we had eight hundred and thirty-two people giving four thousand four hundred and eighty-four hours in two thousand and nineteen, which totals out, if you assign a wage rate to it, that's a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars in donated time in two thousand and nineteen. So just an awesome amount of volunteerism going on. I know we're working according to an effort right now to continue to support those folks and find ways to connect volunteerism and keep pushing that. We know that our, our kind of trusted and loved events like Leprechaun Days and Haunted Trail and all those types of things are always looking for more volunteers, so I would use this moment to plug that and reach out to those groups. I think RosemountEvents.com is the website to go to there to find more of those events, but then there's of course a myriad of events that we'd encourage you to volunteer with. But just excited to acknowledge the volunteers here during National Volunteer Week. So with that, Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, and I'll read this proclamation. Also, it states, whereas the city of Rosemount is proud of the volunteers who continue to enrich our community through their concerned commitment and generosity of spirit. And whereas Rosemount has numerous community organizations and events that thrive with volunteer participation. And whereas our volunteers show every day through their actions that they truly care about our community and the people who live in it. And whereas the city of Rosemount wishes to celebrate the impact of those dedicated volunteers who inspire others and who have discovered their power to make a difference. And whereas we thank the volunteers for their wonderful contributions, their hard work, their commitment to help make our community stronger, more vibrant, and a better place in which to work and live. Now therefore, I, William Drasty, Mayor of Rosemount, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim April nineteenth through April twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty, as National Volunteer Week in the city of Rosemount, and urge all citizens to recognize those volunteers who contribute their time, talent, and energy to our community. Thank you. So that concludes the two proclamations. Items three A and B will now move to public comment. Do we have anyone that is wishing to ask the council a question or make a statement?
Not at this time.
Okay, so if there are no comments, we'll move on to the consent agenda. First of all, are there any items any council member would like to pull? Hi, council member Freski?
I'm going to pull six L.
Okay.
I'll pull, I'll pull M, six M.
Okay, so six L, six M, any other items? If not, would anyone like to move a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion on the floor, council member Weizensohn, second council member Essler. Please take, or first of all, is there any further discussion? And seeing none, please take the roll.
Black?
Aye.
Drasty?
Aye.
Essler?
Aye.
Freski?
Aye.
Weizensohn?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. We'll now move to six L, and I'll turn this over, council member Freski.
Thank you, Mayor. I pulled this item really only to kind of go over for information for our residents, some of the streets that are going to be getting improved this spring and summer. Director Erickson, is this something you could give a quick overview of in detail of the streets and timeline?
Yes, ma'am, I can do that, and I think I can try to share. I actually have the map.
Perfect.
I will try to find that. Sorry about that, just a moment. There. Okay, hopefully everybody is able to see the map that we have. So the, the streets that we have planned for, for work this summer and primarily Mill and Overlay are Dodd Boulevard, we have Chippendale, this big, big long stretch there, one hundred and fifty-first street. And then we also have the, the Finger Streets, and I'm probably going to miss one of them in there. I know there's, there's Claret. And that's, that's the one that I can, that I can see, so. But those are the, those will be the streets that we will be taking care of this summer with Mill and Overlay project. You may have noticed on the top part of the map, there was a section of Conimara that was redone last year. And then the only other thing that's not shown on there is we did, we'll do some approach work for the bridge over the railroad on Conimara Trail. So with that, that's, those are the streets that we're planning to take care of this summer.
Yes. Oh, go ahead.
I was just going to ask for the high level timeline.
Um, we, so we haven't talked to the contractor yet. I would guess, I would bet that they will want to come in fairly quickly and get this done. It's, it's pretty straightforward work. Nobody will be out of their, or unable to get to their home for long periods of time. There might be a short, you know, hour-ish timeframe or so where you might not be able to quite get to your home, but it'll all, all get paved. Most of the work will be done under traffic, so you might have a rough street for a little bit, but after that's done, hopefully it'll look a lot better.
So Brian, a quick question. So if I'm a resident, I'll see these streets torn up. There's going to be many other areas in our community also. Could you briefly mention what other roads there will be activity going on?
I will do my best, Mr. Mayor. So we will have, we'll also have Biscayne between Boulder Trail and one hundred and sixtieth Street or County Road forty-six. That gravel road will become paved, excuse me. Further to the north, Akron is a county project, so that road will also get a gravel to pavement treatment as well. So that's a project that the county's doing, and the city in conjunction with that will also be repaving in a similar manner, one hundred and twenty-fourth Court in one hundred and twenty-first Street. The next item on the agenda, which council member Essler pulled as well is Deepwoods Court, so that section will get reclaimed this summer. And we also have Conimara Trail, which we have, we plan to extend from Akron Avenue to the east about eighteen hundred feet or so, so that will be brand-new road. Currently does not exist. It's farm field there. And then the last one that we have quotes in, and we're still working through some issues on that yet, hope to have that to council in the near future, would be Autumn Path. And then finally, we have Bon Air, which started last year, and we're working with Union Pacific to get the railroad improvements completed sometime this summer. And I think I got, I got them all.
So.
I don't know of anything else that the state or county is doing other than that.
Besides a couple neighborhood roads, but Presswick and Greystone, but that's.
Correct, developer projects. Yes, that's right, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments? If not, would you, anyone wish to move a motion? Please.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution receiving bids and awarding the contracts for the two thousand and nineteen Street Improvement Project Phase Two, City Project two thousand and nineteen dash zero one, and approve Engineering Services Amendment.
I'll second it.
So we have a motion on the floor, council member Freski, second, council member Essler. Any other comments? And seeing none, please take the roll.
Drasty?
Aye.
Essler?
Aye.
Freski?
Aye.
Weizensohn?
Aye.
Black?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero, and that concludes item six L. We'll now move to six M, Deepwoods Court Improvement Project, and I'll turn this over to council member Essler.
Yeah, I pulled this one because I didn't figure we'd had enough conversation on this yet, so I do want to clarify a couple items, though. In the letter from the, the neighbor, from Greg Geisler, number one, I got two questions. Number one, did we get the signed agreement from all eight neighbors before we award this contract?
We do not have the signed agreement for the curb work yet. We do have, again, we do have the email in that the paperwork that will be done is that, that we're working with the city attorney to get that taken care of.
Okay, because I would, I guess I would request, I don't know what the forum or the form it takes, but I think we want to approve it subject to getting a signed agreement by all eight of the residents.
I, we can certainly get that done fairly quickly, I think.
No, the motion, it would be, you're going to make the motion.
Yeah.
Oh, understood, sorry.
I would add that to the motion then.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And then I also just want to ask the question. In his email, he said about the seventeen thousand dollars. He referenced that as we're investing in additional seventeen thousand in drainage cost that would be required if the neighbors were willing to cover a hundred percent of the ribbon curb. Is that, is that true? I mean, I know it's an extra seventeen thousand dollars that the, the city is investing, and it's, I think we're all in agreement on doing that, but I, I don't think that the seventeen thousand was because of the, the additional drainage cost was, am I incorrect? I, I think it's just, it happened to be, it happened.
I, I'm sorry, I had, I had my microphone muted, sorry about that. I was, the, the, so going with the contractor that had the, the best price overall with both the ribbon curb and the street and, and stormwater work, there, that cost, there was additional stormwater cost as part of that, so. And that's McNamara Contracting.
Okay.
Their, their portion of the stormwater work was higher than the other contractor.
But it, but it's not the entire seventeen thousand, though. Right, I mean, so, so the seventeen thousand, the seventeen thousand dollar in additional cost that we're going out of pocket doesn't match up to the drainage cost. And I asked that question because from a precedent standing, from a precedent standpoint, we're not automatically setting ourselves up for always, always paying for the drainage cost. If, if owners, or if, if the residents are willing to participate, or willing to pay for the a curb similar to this scenario, we're, we're not setting precedent here that we're paying for the drainage cost.
We have typically not assessed, on the street, on these type of street projects, we haven't typically assessed the drainage cost. It's been part of our, we've kept it in our, in our stormwater budget in order to address those, those minor things like that.
Okay, okay, all right. I, I just, that, that's what I just want to make sure is on the record that we're, we're not paying, we're paying an extra seventeen thousand dollars, but it isn't assigned to the drainage cost, and that automatically binds us to do this in the future.
Yeah, yes, that would be correct.
Okay. Okay. Then I guess I would, I would make a motion that we adopt a resolution accepting the bids and awarding a contract for the Deepwoods Court Improvement Project, City Project two thousand and twenty dash oh three, subject to getting the signed agreement from all eight residents on Deepwoods Court before we move forward.
I'll second.
We have a motion on the floor, council member Essler, second, council member Freski. Any final comments or discussion? The only one comment I have definitely is section of street that needs to be replaced, and regardless of all the outside activity that's going on, I'm thrilled that it's moving forward.
Yes.
So if there are no further comments, please take the roll.
Essler?
Aye.
Freski?
Aye.
Weizensohn?
Aye.
Black?
Aye.
Drasty?
Aye. Motion carries five zero, and that concludes item six M and all items under the consent agenda. We'll now move on to public hearings, and we have one scheduled this evening, which is the vacation of a drainage and utility easement over Outlet A, Presswick Place, nineteenth edition. And with that, I'll turn this over to Ms. Langquist, our Community Development Director.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'm just gonna pop this on. Hopefully. No, I'm not. I don't know why it didn't work. It worked today when I practiced.
Your, your PowerPoint is up right now.
Oh, excellent.
Yeah, just save from beginning.
Thank you. So this is the site location, and what this is, is ultimately the last phase of the Presswick Place thirteenth edition. And as part of the nineteenth edition, this was an outlot and had a blanket drainage and utility easement, which, as you've seen, is fairly consistent when we have multi-phase projects. To accommodate the Presswick twentieth edition, which you just approved, subject to this vacation in the consent agenda, we need to vacate the drainage and utility easement over the Outlet A. The project well, is part of the last of the final plats in the Presswick Place that was approved by you on the consent agenda, and this is just an illustration of Outlet A. That would be final drainage and utility easements provided, as well as right-of-way in the lot lines as part of that final plat. So with that, we are requesting approval of the vacation. As you are aware, vacations do require public hearing. That was properly noticed in the local paper, as well as property owners immediately adjacent were sent notification.
So thank you. At this time, are there any questions from council members of staff? So if there are no questions, I'll open up the public hearing at this time, and anyone wishing to make a statement or a comment regarding this project may do so at this time.
We have no one online or no one via phone looking to make a comment.
So we'll just wait about twenty seconds, just in case someone's trying to connect. So if there are no comments, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and second on the floor. Aaron, would you please take the roll?
Freski?
Aye.
Weizensohn?
Aye.
Black?
Aye.
Drasty?
Aye.
Essler?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. The public hearing's closed. We'll now open it up to council members for final comments or questions.
None for me.
So if there are none, anyone wish to move a motion? Please.
I'll move to adopt a resolution approving the vacation of the drainage and utility easement over Outlet A, Presswick Place nineteenth edition.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor, council member Weizensohn, second, council member Black, any discussion? And seeing none, please take the roll.
Someone got out of bed. Um, Weizensohn?
Aye.
Black? Drasty?
Aye.
Oh, I didn't.
Aye.
Freski?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero, and it's nice to see someone's watching our meeting. So that concludes our public hearing. We do not have any unfinished business or new business. I'll now move to announcements, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Just a couple of items for staff updates tonight. Of course, main focus continues to be the city's response to the COVID nineteen pandemic. Just a few items to report out on that, but then happy to answer any questions that the council may have as well. We continue to monitor closely our personal protective equipment supply. We are about two months stocked out for our public safety first responders, which is crucially important for that crew. We have had a couple of responses to homes where we have assisted COVID-positive patients, and so it's very important, and those folks truly are on the front lines of this, as are the rest of health professionals. So we, we want to thank them for their service during these, these challenging and frightening times. On the city staff side, happy to report to folks, follow us on social media, they likely saw we received a donation of about two hundred cloth masks from the Al Mahmood Foundation, which is a local foundation of Muslim friends and family. And so that was an awesome, awesome donation that's going to end up outfitting our frontline city staff as we look towards a soft reopening of City Hall, as the governor's orders would end up dictating someday. Speaking of that, we are working closely as a department head team to be prepared to reopen City Hall. We have ordered some of those mobile plastic guards that you might see at, at gas stations, and so that will allow us to begin to serve the public in a, in a manner that's safe for them and safe for us, and allows us to open hopefully as soon and as quickly. them and safe for us, and allows us to open hopefully as, as soon and as quickly as we can. Dan is still on the line. We're working closely with former or current parking directors from across the county to make sure that we're all on the same page. I think the biggest concern we might have is that somebody's tennis court becomes the only tennis court that's open, and then that becomes the most popular tennis court in, in Dakota County. So trying to coordinate with those folks. Dan is also working with his team to be, to be prepped to potentially put ice back in the arena. So we're ready to move a little bit more quickly if and when the governor's order would allow a thing like an ice rink to be open. So it takes some work, as you could imagine, to get that open. And so we've got that prepped. We're beginning to have those conversations as well. And then on the non-COVID front, we're somewhat COVID-impacted, but wanted to put in a plug. We're working with the council right now to book a Zoom council out and about meeting. And so I think council had raised a good point that because of the situation, it's been a while since they've been able to book a time to get out and meet the public. So I'd ask folks to keep an eye on our social media pages for a chance to go Zoom with your council members. And so that should be coming soon enough. But anything I missed or any other department heads around online have anything that they'd like to add?
I have a question.
Councilmember Black?
So I know that we have postponed our tree giveaway from May to June, and know we canceled our citywide garage sale. If there are a lot of people out there like me, I have been doing tons of clean out stuff. Are we still having our spring cleanup day on May 16th as scheduled currently?
Councilmember Block and Mayor, and other council members, we are still planning to have that event. We feel like if the stay-at-home Minnesota is lifted in the near future, prior to the 16th, I think it was, we feel like we can hold that event and still practice social distancing. It might mean that some of the people bringing stuff might have to do a little more lifting than they have in the past, but we still think it's doable. We've, we've spent a lot of time on the phone with all of our vendors who pick up mattresses and, you know, scrap metal and the shredding. And so they're all still on board. So our plan is to still hold that event. I think you're totally correct with people having time to clean their homes and, and go through their garages two or three times. I, I think it's probably a good idea that we do host, host that event.
I for one am thankful. So, thank you.
So any other questions? If not, move on to just announcements. The first thing I'd like to say, I'm sad to report the Honorable Mike Baxter passed away Saturday, April 18th. Mr. Baxter retired as a Dakota County Judge in December 2018. Prior to his judicial appointment on November 5th, 2008, Mr. Baxter served on the Rosemount City Council from January 1st, 2005 through November 5th, 2008. He also served on the Port Authority in 2003 and four, and several citizen committees. Michael was chair of the Port Authority when he guided the redevelopment of Core Block East where the Waterford Mixed Use Development Project was built. Although there were meetings where contentious, Mike's calm disposition, his respect for dissimilar views, and his leadership skills were key to the success of that project. Michael also chaired the St. Joseph's Church and School Citizen Task Force that came to the conclusion that the school should be removed. And today, the Rosemount senior housing exists in that site. Mike also was very active in Rosemount youth activities for many years. It was an honor to serve with him on the city council, Rosemount City Council. His work and dedication to Rosemount is evident on several blocks in our downtown area. Mr. Baxter's warm personality, commitment, and passion to Rosemount will be greatly missed. And on behalf of the Rosemount City Council, I'd like to extend our condolences to his wife, Paula, his children, and his family. On another note, we've had quite a bit of discussion with our residents regarding the census. And as of Sunday, Census Bureau put out nationally, we just passed, I think it's 50.6% in counting. Minnesota was just over 60%, and Rosemount was 72.5%. And the reason that's such a good number is I checked last night, we are ahead of all of our neighboring cities by at least one percentage point, Lakeville, Burnsville, Farmington, and Apple Valley. So I applaud all the residents that filled out, went online and filled that out. Their mail-in long forms will be sent out next process, and eventually they'll go knocking on doors. But especially when you look at all the federal funds that are being disseminated because of COVID-19, they are using the 2018 census numbers. But it is so important when we true up all numbers every decade or every 10 years. The last thing I'd say is I'd ask all residents, I want to say thank you for all the things they're doing for COVID-19. But please remember the six, 10, and 20. Six feet of separation, no more than 10 people in a group, and 20 seconds washing hands. So with that, upcoming on the calendar, the Youth Commission meeting is canceled on Wednesday, April 22nd. The Parks and Recreation Commission will meet on Monday, April 27th, and it'll be via Zoom, I'm assuming. And our next council work session and city council meeting will be on Tuesday, May 5th, with the work session beginning at 5:00 PM and the council meeting at 7:00 PM. And with that, if there are no further reminders or comments, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, meetings adjourned. Thank you.